Hello. Welcome to City of Angels Camp February 6, 2018 meeting. Please stand for the plug.
(inaudible)
So my agenda has changed. Roll call. Who's calling roll call?
We never have roll call.
Veronica Matilde?
Present.
Linda Herman?
Here.
Amanda Colindore?
Here.
Joseph Valverde?
Present.
Here.
Currently, there is no report out of closed session. We will reconvene after this meeting. Do we have the motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Bear with me. Things have moved around on us. Okay, we have presentation. I don't see Mr. Pagans.
We have public comment.
Nope. Adjunct presentation. I don't see it. So what do you want to do? I don't see him. You still want me to present it?
We could postpone the item until later on in the agenda when he arrives.
Yeah, because I think it would be nice to give it to him in person. Can we do that?
Yeah, I gotta do it by motion. Continue by motion.
Okay. Continue by motion? The motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Joe. Okay, on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to adjust the council on any matter not on the agenda. They still prohibit the council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. Matters raised by the public will automatically refer to staff or place on the next meeting agenda. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for public comment. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. Item number six, consent agenda. We have three items. Is there anything from the council that we still have discussed? Poll?
I have a procedural question. Since I was absent for the last meeting, I'll abstain from approval of the minutes, but I can vote on the other two. So you want to pull one out? Do you want to abstain on all? Which procedure?
Probably best to pull the item that you'd like to abstain on.
Okay. That'll be the minutes.
Item A, 6A?
Yes.
So we'll poll item A. Okay, any other? Any public comment? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve item A under the consent agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So four, zero, one.
Abstain.
And then we'll combine B and C. Is there a motion for B and C?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now to our regular agenda. So we have Destination Angels Camp, Debbie Pawnee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I have maybe a three to five minute recess while we set up the screen and the projector here?
Is that fine? Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, so three minutes, four, five minutes?
Yeah, thank you.
This is weird, saying this agenda. This includes included the five o'clock closed session.
Always forward, never back.
Is there a little clipper sorts? Yes, if you don't mind. Can you do my Vanna White?
Does she do that?
Yeah. There it is. It moved. Okay, you ready? Are you ready?
Maybe tone the light down a little bit? Is this here?
Okay, we're back to the regular agenda.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I'm Debbie Pawnee, Executive Director of Destination Angels Camp. And before I get started, I'd like to introduce some of our board members that are here this evening. We are graced with the presence of three of our founding board members. We have Ann Forrest, who was instrumental in getting Destination Angels Camp off the ground, currently serving as treasurer or secretary. Kathy Collins, again instrumental in the development and serving as our current treasurer. Bob Trincaro, instrumental in getting Destination Angels Camp off the ground and seeking the funding resources, currently serving as vice chair. And Larry Cornish is currently our chair of Destination Angels Camp. So we're pleased that they could be here this evening and be supportive and answer questions later from council. So in January, we had our annual meeting. And we had it at the Angels Camp Museum, which was a great opportunity to promote the museum and have members of Destination Angels Camp and special guests see the museum for the improvements that we have. And it was a very interesting conversation with one of our board members of Destination Angels Camp. I will not share his name because he's lived in Angels Camp all of his life, owns and operates a business. And it had been many, many years since he'd been to the museum and never to the Carriage House. So I consider that somewhat success in getting some of our community members there. So we have in our, some of our achievements, and I'm just going to briefly describe some of those. But it was this last year hiring the executive director. So this had been a volunteer position for many, many years, and the board opted to find an executive director and pay. And that's me. So I've been with Destination since January 16, 2017, and currently work part-time. Within the first couple of weeks of joining Destination Angels Camp, our building sold. So that presented a good challenge and a great learning opportunity. We had a local business that was in Vallesito wanting to relocate to Angels Camp. And in doing so, he was looking at property to build upon and decided to buy an existing building and purchase the cornerstone building in downtown Angels Camp and that Signal Service, which he also became a member of Destination Angels Camp. So we had about six to seven months looking for a location, which gave me the opportunity to really seek out and look at almost building, every building in Angels Camp that was available, from downtown to midtown to north town. And we saw square footages all over the place, we saw prices all over the place, and we saw some buildings in very debilitated conditions to some buildings that were in great conditions. And by the luck of the draw, this building became available. And so we are pleased to say that we're in midtown Angels Camp, and we share offices with the Angels Camp Business Association. This is perhaps one of the nicest, oldest buildings in Angels Camp. So it's known as the Prince Garibaldi Building. It's a historical landmark, and it meets our needs for office space and conference room space. We developed a five-year strategic plan. We had a board who looked at our older plan. It was outdated, and many things had been accomplished, some things had not. So we moved forward with continuing those items and developed our five-year strategic plan, which was approved by our DAC board in May and the city council in June. We revised our bylaws, so we were a little bit hefty and not so hefty in some areas in regards to the type of individuals that were members of Destination Angels Camp. And we tried to redo some of the meetings so we could be much more efficient in our operations. We increased our advisory member. When I started, there was anywhere from 20 to 23 active members. We're currently sitting about 31 members, 32 members currently. Some of those members are in-kind services, which at some point is a benefit to DAC. It's a service that they're being provided to DAC, and some pay a fee of anywhere from $500 to $1,000 a year with the three-year commitment. We also established an accelerated business program. It's a network of organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, the Calaveras Business Resource Center, ACBA, Destination Angels Camp. And we work together to provide classes and programs to help support our local businesses. One of the programs, I gave you a flyer, we have Lanny Lot. We received a grant through SBA, and through that grant program, we're able to bring Lanny Lot to the mother lode. And there's a cooperative agreement of about seven different not-for-profit organizations who are bringing her. And we're fortunate to have her in Angels Camp for a few hours. And she's going to tour downtown and look at downtown. She looks at revitalizing downtowns, preferably, not preferably, but one of her special interests is historical downtowns. And she will go into businesses and give them their first impression of what she sees and offer her advice to them. And then she'll be making a presentation, and Banka Stockton is hosting the site. So there's a number there to call. We opted to work with the Chamber of Commerce in regards to kind of a one-stop phone call to make your reservation. And she'll be in five different communities, and folks can go to all five or they can pick and choose. That's one of several business classes that we've had in the last several months. Our work continues in business retention and recruitment, our incentive programs, and kind of a rapid response help team. And I'll explain that a little bit more in our presentation. In our strategic plan, after lots and lots of discussion, it was decided that, you know, we saw ourselves and as we talked to businesses and such, as a go-to place for anything business in Angels Camp. And that's a promotion that we're going to kick off in February and letting people know with whatever kind of business they have in Angels Camp, we're kind of the one-stop shopping. You can come in, and if we don't know the answer, we have our various resources that we can help people and assist with them. Michael Strange and Pablo were part of our featured business programs here at the city council, two new businesses downtown and still with us. So that's a huge achievement. As most of you know, sometimes it's very difficult in a small business and in downtown to keep it going. And that's Ann there passing the keys off to Mark Wilson, who purchased the cornerstone building. In addition to that, we had Tim Oski of Edward Jones make a presentation. We ourselves made a presentation during budget hearing. The Angels Camp Business Association gave some informative discussions during budget sessions. The Mart Twain Wild West and PG&E. We have under construction Dollar General. That was within the first 30 days of starting as executive director. I was told that the Dollar General's last meeting for final approval was going to be at the Planning Commission. And could I go and speak on behalf of Destination Angels Camp? And I was proud to do so, was able to meet the variety of people involved in that project. That was almost a four-year project that finally came to fruition on that night. It started about four years ago with Ann and Kathy and others in Las Vegas. When they went to a conference there on attracting business, recruiting business to Angels Camp, they were able to meet with the folks who are responsible for locating Dollar Generals throughout California, actually the United States. And they came to Angels Camp, and it was a four-year commitment on their part to keep researching and finding the right location. So that's, there they are under construction. Lots of discussion about the Utica Hotel, the latest and the greatest. Yes, the project continues to move on. That's kind of the backside of the building, which most people don't see. They are getting ready. They have their demolition permit, and they're getting ready to tear off. You see that white building there kind of sticking out. So a big portion of that building is going to come out so they can have a direct line access to the parking lot for the ADA. And I won't tell you when they plan to open because that date is like a moving target, but we're hoping for 2018, so. We had some milestones. In 2017, and that kind of a Banka Stockton celebrated 150 years. They are one of the banks that is, you know, a locally owned bank and operated, and they've been in business, continuous business for 150 years. And you don't see many of those kinds of small businesses still going in today's business environment. Cow Waste had a huge celebration, celebrating 90 years. They have also Angels Food Market and Calaveras Lumber with some huge milestones there. On the north end of town, we saw Seer Embroidery come into play. We have Locals Thrift Shop. We have the Repurpose Thrift Shop. We have Sew and Tail. We have the Angels Mexican Kitchen, the Cal Fire TCU Altaville Station. Most don't know this, but if you ever want to travel behind the shopping center there at CVS, you will see a multimillion-dollar project under construction. And of the Cal Fire Unit, Tooluma Calaveras, they have opted to move their maintenance station from San Andreas to Altaville, which means any of the equipment in Tooluma and Calaveras County will come to Altaville, Angels Camp, at the Altaville Fire Station for repair. They're also moving their supply unit out to Six Mile Road to the Vallesito Conservation Camp. And at some point, they plan to relocate their administrative offices to the Sonora area. So they kind of divided up the San Andreas location, and we're fortunate to have them in Altaville Station in Angels Camp. I also have a tour date, and I will be notifying people for a private tour of this particular construction going on because it's quite state-of-the-art and it's a multimillion-dollar project. And then we had Cow Net. They merged, and they opened an office in Angels Camp. Some of our midtown milestones, Get Smart Group, they were part of the relocation from downtown when the building sold. They are now occupying a building that's kind of across the street from Swiniman Hardware. Of course, our office is relocated. The Mart Twain Medical Center, their project was given the green light approval earlier this or late last year. So we're waiting to hear more details as they plan to break ground and move forward. We have the Allison James Real Estate Office that moved into town, and of course, Dollar General. First American Title opened downtown. You see the building there. They occupy all of the first floor. And we have Yummy Haha coming into town. They signed their agreement, and they hope to have a soft ice cream opening in February and with more of a grand opening later on. We have Jack's Beverage Bar that is opening next door to Angels Creek Cafe. Manzanita Press expanded their operation, and they brought in the Alopian Harp. And they're also having not only the music store component, but they continue to give lessons and such. And then, of course, Signal Service, bringing about 17 jobs to Angels Camp with Signal Service's relocation. Okay, that's where I'm going to stop here because you've seen this part of the presentation within our mission, and it's included in your packet. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the action plan, which is this handout here. So I'm not going to go through this word for word, but I do want to highlight, one of the things I thought was important is that as we developed our action plan, that we come back and report not only to the DAC board, but to the city council on how we're doing in regards to the items that we said we would accomplish. So, if you can scroll up a bit, Ann. So under funding, one of the things was build and sustain a diversified funding sources to ensure long-term viability. One of the key things for us was to be able to recruit advisory council members. So we set a goal of four per quarter. So far, we've recruited 12 in the first two quarters, and we have four in-kind and eight paid. We're seeking grant funding to help support some of our causes. One of the things we concentrated on is how to bring classes to our business community and how to do this in a cooperative effort. We found it was next to impossible to be standing alone doing these kinds of classes. So it was really important for us to network with other organizations, such as the Chamber of Commerce and Murphy's Business Association and so on, in bringing classes to our community. One of the classes we're hosting tonight is in San Andreas, and Scott Reynolds of Get Smart Group is hosting a class on targeting social media. And we plan to have him in April in the Angels Camp area. So those are, that's one example of the classes that we're providing, in addition to having Lanny Lot join us. We've established some focus groups. One of the things that we really want to work with the city council on is taking a look at a sales tax initiative, perhaps, looking at the TOT tax and other kinds of, maybe a business improvement district or other kinds of streams of revenue. So we at DAC have not done anything with this. It's kind of pending, the arrival of the new city administrator and the opportunity to take a look at where the city stands and gain some city council support in pursuing. So it's certainly nothing we're going to do alone, but we hope to have it as a cooperative working relationship, but that's something that the city wants to pursue. We also looked at operations and positioning. One of the things we wanted to do with our new location, because we're more or less central and we got good highway frontage, is do more with our office in regards to walk-ins and encouraging businesses to come in and stop by and find out what resources are available to them. So we're kicking off our campaign in February with social media, press releases, flyers, email campaigns, some signage. And I will be going out to various groups and speaking to various groups in regards to services that we can do with Destination Angels Camp. We also have our services on the website and our social media, and we have an action plan going forward and posting those kinds of activities on our social media. We find where we get a lot of hits on our Facebook page as well as on the website, and that tends to reach a younger generational market that we're trying to tap into, to entrepreneur-like and bringing services to Angels Camp. We looked at our office move. I feel that we were successful in finding space in regards to the timeframes we have. At one point, it was a goal for the executive director to be a full-time position, so we're not quite there yet in regards to our funding and be able to sustain that. So currently, I've established the hours of Monday through Friday from 10 to 3:00. And I felt it was important for Destination Angels Camp office to have a full-time feel of a presence, and so that's why we keep our office hours open every day. But I'm also available by appointments, and I do find that sometimes that's necessary to meet people early in the morning for maybe breakfast, coffee, to discuss, or even in the evening. And then we're looking at ongoing ad hoc committees to review the pros and cons of whether or not we want ACBA, which is the Angels Camp Business Association and Destination Angels Camp, to combine resources. We plan to have a joint board meeting in March to come up with our conclusions and make a recommendation on whether or not we need to do that or feel that's in our best interest. Business expansion. You know, what I found in this particular job is the number of walk-in traffic that I receive. And so with that, it gives me an opportunity to talk to people about their business plans, offer some resources. But more importantly, I find touring Angels Camp probably gives us a better opportunity to really showcase what Angels Camp has to offer. For those who aren't able to go on tour, we have our property database program. That's very helpful to refer people to. They can see all of Angels Camp, they lay out the number of properties that might be available, square footage and that sort of thing. And testing my theory here is I've taken your city administrator, Melissa Eads, on tour. So last week, we saw a complete tour of downtown Angels Camp. She saw Angels Camp like she never saw it before. And tomorrow, we get to look at midtown and uptown to get a good look of Angels Camp, and she gets a chance to see what my tours are all about. We wanted to do some business surveys, you know, what people are looking for, what their needs are, what they think about Destination Angels Camp, the business association. So I was hopeful to get something going with the University of Pacific Business College. I do have some contacts there. There is interest, but with everything going on this fall with our relocation, that kind of went on the back burner. So we plan to pick that up in the spring and continue that goal. So far, I've had about 21 potential business leads, very interesting leads, a lot of just small business opportunity. But here lately, we've had developers looking at Angels Camp and looking at wanting to develop undeveloped pieces of property. So Dave Hanam and I work very closely together. Either he gets the call or I get the call, and together we come together, and we look at property database, we find out what their needs are, and try to refer them to different parts of town depending upon what they're looking for. And we have a lot of activity in the works and in the pipeline, so it'll be interesting what that does for the rest of 2018. Featured business presentation, this is something that's kind of been on the wayside. We're bringing it to life in 2018, and we have five planned presentations for you during, from now until June. And later this month, you'll hear from Cow Waste and have an opportunity to hear about their business. They are also going to be inviting you to their recycle center in Galt. And if you have never been there, it is awesome to see. It's a state-of-the-art recycling center, and I tell you, once you see it, you want to go home and recycle. It's pretty amazing. Business attraction, some of the tours, and I don't list who they are, but they are available in my office, and you're always welcome to come in and see that. One of the things that we pride ourselves at Destination Angels Camp is confidentiality. Most people who come in and want to talk about either expansion or relocating their business really don't want 100 other people to know. So we give them a code name, and that's how we refer to them in regards to what their needs are, what they're looking for, and how we can work with them. Same thing with contacting franchises. We had the Buckston Report. Dave Hanam has turned me on to a couple other real estate broker-type sites. And so I sit and make a phone call or generate a letter and have a packet of information to go out to them about what's available in Angels Camp. We offer a lot of welcome business kits to new businesses. Working with the city, I get copies of who the business licenses are. It's interesting when I look at them, there's probably one storefront, I'll say in a quarter if I get 12 to 15. One would be a storefront type of business. Five or six will be home-based businesses, and the other is really a business that may be doing a business, Angels Camp, maybe a contractor who may be building a home, maybe two or three, but he has purchased a business license. So I make contact with each and every one of them to let them know that we're available and what services that we can provide to them. So we like to track those business licenses. We have updates that are on our property base. I encourage you to look at our website. You get to see the properties that are on there. Some are really good about wanting me to put it on there and let it be known that it's available, and others are a little bit more quiet about it. So I try to work with property owners and meeting with them. I'm building this database now to start to take pictures of inside of the building or talk more about the infrastructure that's available in the building because those are the type of questions that are coming to me. It's one thing to say that this building is 3,000 square feet. Some people are asking me about ADA access, parking, infrastructure, water, sewer, so on and so forth. So I'm trying to build that database as I can. Tourism, that's one of the missions that we have. And as we look at tourism, one of the things I find very interesting is that we really need to look at our infrastructure in regards to tourism. Sinage is a big deal. Parking is another deal. But one of the things I have found is like for every event that happens in Angels Camp, I will get anywhere from two to six inquiries after that event about people wanting to do business in Angels Camp. So it's very interesting that I see this, and I really see it with the Mart Twain Wild West Fest. And I don't know if that just generates more people to the community or not. So I try to track those things, and if there's a success or a business that opens, if we could tie it into that event or however they got here, it'll just be more data for us to kind of hone in on as we start to recruit more businesses. Empty building tours. We have a few of them, a few of them downtown. So we have a special project where we have targeted one particular owner of several buildings downtown in meeting with this individual and trying to find out what it is that we can do to be more helpful in getting business into that location. So I'm really finding it's an education process because most are living kind of in the past of maybe what's been there, and they really don't know what's going on in Angels Camp. They really don't know that there is a plan and the type of businesses that we're trying to recruit. So we have several of these kinds of business owners, but we decided So we have several of these kinds of business owners, but we decided we're going to tackle one at a time. And so we have our target and we're working on that particular owner as we speak. We're supportive of the various plans the city has done in regards to wayfinding, the Highway 449. We certainly would like to see some of those projects come in the forefront. It'd be nice to complete a portion of a project, and so we hope to work with the city council to identify what those projects might be and how we can help in either facilitating that project or looking, seeking out funding so we can get some of these projects completed. We have our banner project, which was banners along our poles in town. This has kind of been set on hold. Still looking at funding as we pursue things, but we have found other things that are coming to the forefront, especially as we have businesses that are wanting to relocate and move and build and so on, that we're concentrating on those things. Government relations, meetings like this, bringing you up to date and keeping you informed as to what we're doing. I encourage all of you to stop by the office at any time to talk, to ask me questions, to see who's doing what and why. We also attend the planning commission meetings to do the same thing. I also keep in touch with the County of Calaveras to see what they're up to. I find that there's a lot of folks who look in kind of the Angels Camp sphere of influence, so try to do a better networking and working with folks at Calaveras County. Most recently, Calaveras County hired an economic development director, was able to meet her last week, and we've agreed to establish monthly meetings with the county administrator, Melissa and I and her, to start to establish a better working relationship and how we can work together, because there is some crossover in some of our responsibilities. And we also agree that if it comes to Angels Camp, it helps Calaveras and vice versa. But of course, we want them in Angels Camp first. Dave Hannam and I, part of our relationship, we meet at least monthly, sometimes more frequently as the need comes about, if he gets a phone call or I get a phone call, and kind of comparing our notes and seeing how we can do maybe a tour or referral or provide information, whatever that person may need to help them make that decision. And then as I spoke earlier, we had our annual meeting in January. We plan to have another meeting sometime this summer and further communicate with our DAC advisory committee in keeping them involved. We hope to host a series of focus groups, whether it be a sales tax kind of focus group or we want to look at this kind of business coming in or this kind of industry, or there's a policy that's being developed, and gather information from our advisory councils. And these are folks who have been in business for the most part for quite some time in and around the Angels Camp area or do a lot of business in Angels Camp. So we feel their opinion counts, and we want to hear from them on what they think about these things. So that's our update. I'm here to answer questions, if you have any, or if you feel like you'd like to stop by the office, I'm more than willing and available to talk to you about any of these things I've addressed tonight. Any questions?
Quick comment. I want to thank you for such a thorough presentation. It's nice to see all the work that's being done. It's nice to see some activity and things happening. One thing that really struck me, in fact, is something that Ann Forrest talked to me about a while back, was that whenever we hold an event like the Wild West Fest, you're giving these, you know, half a dozen inquiries, and it makes sense, and there's a theory that, you know, people want to open business where people go.
Right.
So if you attract the people into town first, the businesses would follow, as opposed to attracting businesses first, hoping that people will follow.
Right.
So that was an interesting, you know, discussion that we had, and it seems like it's ringing true.
It is, and that's, you know, I can't say enough about our partner with the Angels Camp Business Association, because they really host these events, the Mark Twain Wild West Fest, Taste of Calaveras, Farmer's Market. So, you know, there's something to say about those events. It really attracts people to the community. They also see what a nice vibrant community it is, and it's a healthy community. So, you know, the more that we can do in the quality type events, I think it's good for Angels Camp, so thank you. All right, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. So we, we are going to go back to, I'm not used to this agenda. Bear with me, where am I at?
Number four.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I, we are going to go back to presentation, which was item number four. Due to family, Mr. Big Ant was not able to come tonight, so he has asked that we talk about Kindness Week on his behalf. And the city has been partnership with Kindness Week since 1995. And every, every year between February 11th and February 17th, the city recognizes Kindness Week and everyone, these will be passed out, has these to hand out to people, and you can sign your name, and there's pins.
Pins to pin it on.
So I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February 11th through February 17th, 2018, and whereas the City of Angels officially became a kindness zone on February 7th, 1995, and is so recognized with Resolution Number 9507. And whereas all who live and work in the City of Angels will be encouraged to practice random acts of kindness whenever possible. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Angels designate the week of February 11th through February 17th to be Kindness Week throughout the city. So when you leave, please, please take a couple ribbons and hand them out. And then we will make sure that Mr. Big Ant gets this. Okay. Any other comment on that item before I move on? No? So back to regular agenda. So we have Resolution 1805 approving the budget amendment for 2017, 2018 fiscal year. Julie.
Good evening. Last time I'm asking you for money. You can all smile. Basically, everybody's aware that there's been a lot of changes going on in the Finance and Administration Department of the city. We've got a new city administrator, we've got a new accountant, and you'll have a new finance officer very soon. All of those changes created some pressure on the budget, both because we needed to provide for duplicate payments to people to get some training done, and two of the employees leaving are leaving after 10 years plus, and they had some leave that needed to be cashed out. We don't typically plan for leave unless we know somebody's leaving, and they've told us they're retiring, so these were all kind of a guess. In total, we're asking for 76,000, 78,600. On the end of the agenda item, it shows the breakdown between what's hitting the general fund, the wastewater fund, the water fund, and the road funds, based on our allocations for this year. The most important, or the one I usually get asked about, is the general fund. The general fund will still have $840,000 in it after this change. These changes, these particular budget adjustments are one time this year only, so they won't impact next year, and we're asking that you approve this budget request.
Okay, any comment for council? Public comment? Being no comment, it's a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Could I do a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Olivera, definitely by Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight, consolidated staff report. In our package, we have a consolidated report from each department, breakdown that the council was provided. Are there any questions from the council?
I have got one question about the chief and the backup generator at the police services. Begs the question, what about this building? Is that the backup generator? Nate, do you know?
The chief's proposal does not include backup power for this building, and we currently do not have backup power for this building.
Is that something that you're putting forward as, can you qualify for this grant under the same...
Homeland Security, we get a portion of it, not as significant as the police department does. We would not have enough funding available to us to do that, but, I mean, that has been something we've been talking about and like to do for some time, because it does pose a problem during outages.
So you don't qualify to apply?
We do. We're part of the Homeland Security Grant.
Right.
We just don't receive as much of a portion as the police department does.
So would you need a matching fund to match, I mean, to offset what you would be getting for that?
We would need another funding source, whether it be the general fund or another grant, to fulfill the total cost of generators.
Is there any other comment?
One other one. Nate?
Yeah.
Big jump in calls for service.
Yeah.
What's the analysis of it? I mean, it's like...
It's hard to say completely, but some of it is more activity at our assisted care facility on top of the hill.
Yeah.
We get a lot more calls for service for disabled people needing assistance up. We're getting just more calls all the way around. But there has been a spike in calls at the assisted care facility for one. But, you know, for whatever reason, medical is up considerably, but we had an increase in fire calls this year across the board. Everything you look at is up.
Did the care facility change their acuity blend? Do they go with more dementia or memory care type situation? Have they changed the people they accept?
They have increased their license to accommodate a memory care facility on the first floor, but I don't know that that was a contributing factor to additional calls there. Probably more of staff policy than a different clientele.
So could some training be done to help mitigate that a little bit?
I don't know that I could speak to their business plan and policies, but...
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comment from council? I just had a comment. I have been getting a lot of compliments on the streetlights that have been getting fixed around town, so I don't know who, some of the lights are getting fixed and people are noticing and they're happy, and so I wanted to relay the message that, good job.
Nice tough night.
Okay. So, okay, council reports. I will start to my left with Councilmember Metori.
I attended the Destination Angels Camp annual meeting at the museum, and that was a very nice presentation. I also attended the UWPA meeting. And Angels is in remat, but unfortunately, due to a hiccup in application, Murphy's didn't get on, but hopefully that'll be remedied. And if not, they have a Plan B, so that would be nice. But it would be great if, we'll see if they get into remat.
You're talking about the rate structure for Murphy's?
Yeah.
The generating plant?
Yeah.
They didn't get it redefined?
It was paperwork, and then...
Litigation.
Yeah.
I think they're waiting for February 7th.
Yeah.
Tomorrow. Cross your fingers.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. I went to ACBA meeting today, the coffee time that you have, and I was just going to mention something that Debbie mentioned, that Mary Beth Hospital wants to take us on a tour of the Cal waste recycling, so she mentioned that today when she was there. And also on February 20th, we will be getting information on the transit plan and on the joint powers agreement that we've been working on with the county and COG. And so on February 20th or 7th, a meeting which will give us more information about that and an opportunity to vote at that time, if we feel comfortable.
Councilmember Olivera?
Nothing to report? No report?
I have one, I don't know if you noticed, there was another news camera person walking around, so we'll be on the Fox 4 News tonight, guys. So, and that is all I have to report right now.
You should go on Facebook.
Yeah, probably will be.
No, I know, but you're on Facebook.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to check that.
You'll be on TV tonight, so don't be shocked. Okay, with that, we're on to calendars.
Okay, tomorrow night at 5:30, there is a COG meeting at the Board of Supervisors chamber. On the 15th of February, 10th, I'm sorry, 8:30 AM is Museum Commission. 10:30 AM is the DAC Executive Committee. And there is a CSEDD, the Economic Development District meeting, at 9:30 on Friday, the City offices will be closed in observance of President's Day on the 19th, and on the 20th, we'll be back here for city council at 6:00 PM.
And then we will adjourn into closed session. Thank you.